And so that's about 540 more than we usually get. And it was really nice and I really hope that no matter what your position was when you came that you learned something about Sohegan High School and in particular the budget. So we'll go on from there to the principals report.
So welcome everybody, happy February. The principals report, a couple of thank yous. The National Blood Society, they did their annual blood drive and that's always a great day and the student run. Also the theater program, they have begun a little bit of a tradition of creating donations and most recently they made a nice donation to the Hope for Gus. So those students sometimes are recognized only during the season but they're very active the whole year. Couple of updates, we always want to bring you a PACE update, I'll just briefly summarize. We were lucky enough to work with Susan Lyons from the Center for Assessment, she's a consultant. And at the end of the year, we are responsible for reporting out on competencies. Right now, we're still working on finalizing some of our competencies. So last year, we were involved in the assessments. This year, we definitely want to be involved in the reporting out on competencies. Our work around that won't be completed, so Susan Lyons was nice enough to come with us and work on how we'll report out before our competencies are totally completed on our ALAs, which are essentially been our competencies for years. So she was helpful in navigating that. So we're excited about continuing the PACE project, this year adding reporting out on our competencies, our learner expectations, knowledgeable person, effective communicator, et cetera. And she worked with us also as we navigate where we're heading eventually with our point scale. So that was excellent work and again, the math science and English teachers were able to avail themselves of some of those resources we talked about at the deliberative session. Next steps, Kathy will reach out to all the grade level content areas, teachers and help them with their rank books to align the point system for our reporting out. The US Department of Ed visit, I think really hot off the presses update. Our Commissioner Virginia Barry is contacted by Ann Whelan and Acting Assistant Secretary of Elementary-Secondary Education and Emma Vadehera, the Chief of Staff for the Secretary of Ed, and they'll be visiting us on April 1st. So that's pretty much been confirmed and more on that next month than what the visit will entail. But again, it just shows the traction that our work is getting at the national level and I believe even in Governor's State of the State address, the PACE initiative was mentioned as well. SAT, the new SAT is wonderful in lots of ways, not the least of which, we think it's a much more meaningful assessment. It also aligns with our other work as part of our accountability system. It does however, have some interesting residual effects and we'll talk about that a little bit more next month, but we're aligning the logistics for the SAT. Looks like we would use the annex as our testing center so we can isolate the students. We're looking to create a senior project offsite workday to manage how many students we'll have here, very much like how the PSATs with the seniors are on their senior hike because the SAT is not like S-Back or some of the other tests where teachers can rotate in and out and we can cover and reduce how many substitutes we would need. So once you're in, you're in, it's a regular SAT. So it is interesting that it's our state assessment, but it's also the SAT and has to fulfill those requirements. So a lot of logistics, a lot of people have been working on that and we feel very good about being able to provide a very, very accommodating test center. And the ninth and 10th grade students will have a day normal and the 12th grade, a senior project offsite day. And more on that later as we finalize those plans.
Can I just ask one question? So the SATs were approved as the standardized test for New Hampshire and I know I've seen and heard out there that people are thinking that the board and administration made the decision not to use Kneecap anymore. Can you just kind of clarify that a little bit?
Well, Kneecap was replaced by Smarter Balance, which is replaced by the SAT, so that's the state of New Hampshire.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't the board and superintendent that made that decision?
Yeah, I think I heard that the other night or Monday or Tuesday I heard that. That's the state decision, not ours. And PSAT reports, which are important to our students being prepared for the SAT, those score reports have arrived. The councils have been meeting with juniors this week to review and distribute their reports. The really important part, and I sent a link and I hope it got through, one of the great new additions this year is the PSAT scores and Khan Academy work together so a student can get their PSAT scores and customize their Khan Academy SAT prep. We've been in classrooms with all students, we're going to register all students, we'll finish that this week. So a lot of things are coming together in a very, you know, very exciting way. Program of Studies, I just offered the timeline that we go with. Our new Program of Studies just came in. We talked about the proposed additions, I think when I wrote this, they were proposed and they're actually in. AP Computer Science, Programming and Vex Robotics are three of the additions for the 2016, 2017. Of course, the election night for parents, current freshmen and sophomores are invited to the presentation. We always try to get information out to incoming parents a little bit earlier and also we like to frame the whole four-year experience. So the parents have been invited to that night and as you'll see from our schedule, March becomes a very, very important month for us as enrollment numbers start to roll in and by April, we have an idea and we can start drafting the schedule. Other things under Teaching and Learning, the Hype Conference, I just got an update, I think 950 are registered for this year's Hype. It got so big that they actually had to have a pre-conference at St. A's about a month ago or a few weeks ago for our students to go train students from other schools to be facilitators at the Hype Conference because so many facilitators are needed. And this year, there'll be an adult workshop given by our students for educators in these other schools to help with developing this kind of program. So we'll get more details, I know it's hard to find time in people's schedules because it's very busy, but if there's a chance, I don't know if folks have gone up to that, but if there's a chance that you folks want to go and observe, I would definitely recommend it. It's extremely, extremely powerful and quite frankly, moving. And one of the great measurements that we use for performance tasks really, I don't know what better indicator of our students being leaders and being able to communicate and navigate the 21st century than to put on a conference that involves four states and a thousand students from 20 to 30 schools, so.
It was all started by Sohegan students. Could you remind people what Hype stands for, our viewing audience?
Yes. Hosting, Young, Philosophy, Enthusiast.
Thank you.
So.
Student-led programs started by Sohegan students, it is amazing how much it's grown.
And World Language Program Review, I just wanted to, at the time I sent this out, I hadn't received some of the information I wanted and my battery may have died, so I'll summarize it and if Kathy fills in any breaks or Christine, if I miss anything. But the World Language Program Review, they will be meeting on the 10th and 11th districtwide with consultants, two consultants who will come one day, the first day, they'll observe classrooms. At the end of the day, they'll sit with the teachers and they'll customize the second day's workshop. And it's really around looking at the competencies the World Language Department has created and want to adopt and the World Language Department is excited about it, but they wanted some guidance saying, well, how should we adopt and are we choosing the right competencies? So some work was done to avail them of some consultants and they're excited about that work. Next month, I'll probably be able to get some of the residual from it and you know, I can include it in some attachments, but it's really encouraging because the World Language Department's been working at Sohegan but also districtwide. So districtwide, teachers will be observed, meet that first day with the two consultants, customize the next day's work around, so how do we work with these competencies and how do we develop curriculum? So that, quite frankly, I think is, you know, a big giant step from where we were a year or so ago, so we're excited about that work. And then some acknowledgements, again, they were kind of coming fast and furious, so a few that don't show up here. We of course are excited, the 2016 New Hampshire Scholarship Awards Program, Gold Key, Jacob L., Photography. Stephanie, and I always want to go by Peter and get the pronunciation.
It's Lackalade.
What is it?
Lackalade.
Okay.
Jake Lackalade.
Jake, congratulations. Photography, Stephanie Lagone for Photography and Emma Johansson for Painting, Silver Key, Zoe Garvey for Photography, Dylan Mornol for Photography, Ben Westenberg for Photography, Lily Batcholder for Painting, Madison Colby for Jewelry Design and Sienna Lagone for Mixed Media. Honorable Mention, Kelly Merrifield for Photography, Madison Colby for Jewelry Design. And as I mentioned, the red cross, blood drive. This was one of several things that came across the screen while I was collecting and going for the acknowledgements. There are a few others. We have an alum who recently did one of the TED Talks in Manchester, you know, they have that and will supply that on our website, I believe, Cara Griffiths, and she's given permission for us to share that. And Cara was wonderful and she endured a concussion and came back from it and you know, she speaks of that experience. You'll notice under the Silver Key, Ben Westenberg for Photography. You may have seen Ben in the international media area of the Trump rally recently when our group went over to the Trump rally from the claw and Ben and, oh, there were two other students, all excited, they came back as they were rubbing elbows and they came back with business cards from Time Magazine and Huffington Post and a few other places. So as we had hoped, our students, based on the strategic plan and some of our curriculum, are really getting real-life experiences. So next month's acknowledgement section will update with links and some of the work the students have done. It's really been exciting and that is it.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to add on because Cara's mom updates the board every now and then, so she sent us the link also on the TED Talk. And she said that in order to speak at TED events, you have to be nominated and she was nominated for TEDx Women 2015 but didn't make the cut. She was nominated again by three completely separate people and was invited to present in November. And she also has been accepted to be a blogger for the appalachiontrails.com and she starts in March to hike the Appalachian Trails and she's going to keep us updated. So at the end of February, she also was invited to be a panelist for the first International Summit on Female Concussions at Georgetown University Medical School, so she'll be there too, so.
I watched it, it was really a good presentation.
Yeah, I watched part of it and then ran out of time before I had to come here, so we can see it on.
If you go to YouTube, you can also see it. It's surviving concussions or specific names?
I'll forward the link to you because it's in the email. It's The Ugly Truth About Concussions.
Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Liz Purvis. Oh, I'm sorry?
And I'll direct it to Rob, you may want to concentrate on Christine.
All right.
Christine.
I'm here.
So you mentioned the World Language Program Review. The last two program reviews that we're on were the math and the supervision evaluation, a really big deal, large thing. I don't remember any big wind-up for world language like that, so I'm wondering how this is being interpreted differently.
Yeah, and I believe maybe just semantics. You're right, we use program review top to bottom. This might be more synonymous with really focused professional development together. So I think it's just our use of program review is, we're maybe really taking liberties with what our program reviews. We just use it internally, like we have the World Language Program, et cetera, so I think it's more just semantics.
We've had discussions about it through the SAU, the Foreign Language, World Language Program, so.
Anything to add, Christine, am I?
That's all correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for Rob? I should have asked before. All right, so now that brings us to the Community Council Report and Ms. Liz Purvis, if you'd like to come up. And Tim, would you mind handing over the microphone?
I'm going to do the.
Oh, okay.
I'm using one from my end.
Okay, so most recently on council, we've had three big proposals come up. The first one was voted on a couple of weeks ago and it was a change in the schedule because we were having schedule reviewing, as Pete said, and so the idea for that proposal was to change every late start white day to a late start gold day. And that proposal did not pass and there was a lot of discussion on the timing of it because late start white days are very short, so classes are about 30 minutes, 35 minutes, but there still is work that gets done in those classes. So major points were that it was good because students would be able to get more work done. The major idea was to switch white days with gold days, so there would never be a late start white day, it would be a late start gold day. But the issue with that is gold days would take the hit and two times out of three, a late start would be a gold day. So you would get significantly less time in your gold day classes, which are first, third period and seventh period, at least for the double blocks. So that did not pass and there was a lot of good discussion on that. And another thing that was important was because we're having a review of the schedule, people thought we should wait till then to make any necessary changes instead of implementing something when we're already reviewing our schedule. So the next proposal we have talked about recently was a proposal brought up by a student to change the wording of the academic integrity consequences in the rules of the road. And her proposal is still in discussion and it is to change the wording for a second offense from a three-day out-of-school suspension to a two-day in-school suspension. And the reason she brought this up was because she thought that having an out-of-school suspension is more like a vacation, it's not conducive to learning and so instead of having that out-of-school suspension, in-school suspension would allow you to get more caught up in your classes and make better use of your time. So it's still in discussion. There have been a lot of points brought up on both sides, meaning that some people think that it's necessary to have that wording because in the end of the decision, it is still up to the dean's discretion. So the point is that Pete or whoever is making the decision can choose not to give the student a three-day out-of-school suspension. So that's another reason why there have been thoughts against the proposal, but another thought in favor of the proposal has been that, you know, it shouldn't be used as a tactic to, I guess, scare students into behaving. I know that would totally work with me, but I'm not everybody. And we've also made an amendment on the proposal to include some things we've seen at other schools. We've seen that other schools such as Exeter and Auburn have used a academic integrity consequence as notifying honor societies and potentially losing honors credit in a class because if you're caught plagiarizing or cheating, we deemed that it was necessary to consider notifying honor societies because that's not necessarily what they look for in a student when they are making decisions. So it's still in discussion, it's a very active discussion because the topic isn't just a little change in the wording, it's a change in the overall consequence. And then our last proposal that we are still also discussing is brought up, it was brought up by Mike Bellevue and it was to have about three times, three to five times a year, we would celebrate any groups or sports teams or clubs that have done notable things such as win a championship or, you know, make an extremely big impact in some way. And the way of which we would do that is we would take 10 or 15 minutes at the end of the day or change the schedule slightly and we would kind of have it so that everybody lines up in a specific area and we just clap for them and show our appreciation, kind of like what the freshmen do when they, on their first day, when they first come in. So that is an option to boost our school spirit and enhance our community and we haven't gotten very far in the discussion on that, but a lot of what's being said is very positive things such as it's not just for sports teams, it's not just to glorify sports teams, it's also including like math team and the theater club and everybody. So it's a way to be more inclusive as well as boost community and school spirit.
Right. Good recap.
That was a lot. I apologize.
Oh, no, no, that's great. Does anybody, yeah, does anybody have questions or comments for Liz? And just to, for those that don't know what she referenced, on the first day of school, I know you guys know, but on the first day of school, the seniors line the hallways and clap as the freshmen come in, so she was saying that would be similar to what the seniors do. All right, thank you very much, Liz. And the only other thing I wanted to add for Community Council is I have been talking with Jeannie actually and I sent an email to the faculty advisors because we still have an open spot for EM Hearst, for a community member, because one of our community members had to leave because of illness in the family. So we thought it would probably be a good idea, since there's only five community members and one board member, that we have alternates for those positions. And so we're talking about that with the executive, or will be, with the executive and the faculty advisors and Paul Schlotman seems to think that we don't need to change the bylaws in order to do that and, but I think there's still more discussion that needs to be done on that and it's a good idea. That way, if the one board member that's assigned to it can't make it, another board member who maybe can, can go and still have voting rights. And Jeannie and Nan Sterns might share that Community Council position in the meantime since we haven't heard from anybody else, so. And that's it. And you're welcome to stay, Liz, and if not, then I'm sure, you know, you have, if you have homework or whatever else to do, then we won't be. All right, committee reports. Thank you. Tim, do you want to go over those slides now?
I don't know, I was thinking actually of doing it after Jim's presentation.
Oh, okay. Steve, the PPC sick bank, or, oh, is that?
It's on the agenda.
It's under the policies, I didn't see it.
It's under the policies, I think.
Or GCC, GDC.
Oh, oh, leaves and absences, okay, okay, I guess, I didn't know that that was the same policy you were talking about.
Since you're talking to me, I'll say the primary ordinance for election days, that should be an action item, not just information.
Okay.
I don't want to vote for the word on that.
Oh, we do have to vote on that? I thought it was just informational. Okay, we'll vote on it.
I want to vote on that.
Okay, that's fine, we'll put it right under action items. So that brings us to public comment time, if there's anyone from the public wishing to speak, Lisa?
Can you do a question? Hi.
Margaret McCabe, and I have just a couple of questions. I'm sorry, I didn't send agenda, they really were kind of off the top of my head after the deliberative session. I had two questions. One was about the world languages and the fact that the fifth level was being cut and someone explained to me why and is it based, there wasn't enough students for those levels or what was the issue? Because it became a very, you know.
Yep, Level 5, the enrollment that we look at in classes is, you know, we're restricting kind of as a cutoff and sometimes from year to year, the Level 5 will go a little bit below, sometimes above, so they've always been on our radar, but frankly, it was a staffing issue. We used some attrition in that area last year in order to make some reductions and we didn't rehire a world language teacher, so we weren't able to.
Okay, well, because it made it sound like it was cut for expense reasons at the deliberative and what I was going to add, well, you know, but if it was.
We weren't able to staff it because we had to reduce staff.
Okay, but my question is, and I know you're working towards this, is having dual-language certified teachers. So, and you had in Latin, four and five, I get, or three and four levels and could that have been done with Spanish, like four and five in Spanish or four and five in French too, so it wouldn't have to have been eliminated?
No, but we're working toward that model. Latin's a little bit easier because it's only Latin in the amount of students and quite frankly, there's some work to be done on developing the competencies. It's in the Four and Five level, the numbers I think would have prevented it because values are pretty large and to add that.
Prevent you.
Right, but we're in the early stages of considering that kind of model of competency-based and folding. We have to look and see if that's the optimum experience. In Latin, we feel like it can work a little bit because of the amount of students, but the Four and Five and to have an AP, we weren't able to carry all three of those.
That's fine, I'm just, okay. And then my second question was about textbooks. At two deliberative sessions, last year we were told there are no math textbooks today, last Monday we were told there are no AP history textbooks. Can I ask why we don't supply textbooks if the teachers really feel there's a need for it? Because it's kind of like taxpayers are up there paying all this money and then we have people getting up every year saying, we don't have textbooks.
Ashley, can I clarify last year's? Because last year it was a student that got up and one of the things that was in the default budget that was a one-time expense, that we showed, one-time expenditures show, as you know, Maggie, the amount of the one-time expenditures in our budget is what has to come out. We don't have to cut those things out.
Right.
When we get, if we get a default budget, we can obviously rearrange things if we think that the items, the one-time expenditures are important enough. So what the student got up and said was that she did not feel that cutting textbooks would be the right thing to do. It wasn't a staff member or an administrator that said that we didn't have math textbooks.
Okay, I agree with that comment. This year, it was a teacher who got up and said it. So is there a reason, is it that we don't feel there's a need for it? That teacher wants them? I mean, it's when you're talking about a budget as big as this and the cost of a textbook, it's kind of, when you go to the deliberative and hear that, it's kind of like, I mean, come on, we're spending lots of money, we should be able to afford those textbooks. And I don't understand the rationale and I don't know if it was just an emotional argument or are we really saying, we don't think you need to do it that way, educationally?
I would say your first characterization may have been, maybe correct the emotional part, I think it may have been a little overstating that at the beginning. There was a shortage and we corrected it.
Okay.
And Christine or Kathy might have even more exact specifics, but I think it was a reference to the AP.
Yeah, the AP textbook. Yeah, okay. Anyway, that's, those were my two thoughts.
So they didn't have a microphone, so I'll just, to reiterate what Kathy said, is that they went back, the administration went back after the deliberative to check to see if that was truly the case and there was enough for a set for each class, so.
If I can, it's funny, it's funny because I happened to be in the library the day that those textbooks were being handed out for that particular class, probably last year. And A, the piles were quite large, there were a lot of them. And B, I was interested, so I kind of leafed through it and I think, this is awesome, it's a very thick book and it's just a compilation of ready-filled documents. So. So everything in that book is available online. So it's not like it's special material that, that is unique to that textbook, it's just a compilation of original writings of the founding fathers up through a certain period of time. So, you know, if, even if we were 10 books short for the class because we were subscription, I think it would be very easy to provide the portions that are needed to the students. So that's just my, my personal experience with that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify there because it, it did create, you know, it helped to inflame the crowd a bit, I think. Thank you.
The only thing I thought when I heard that was, we don't always know enrollment in classes and I wondered if maybe that was, you know, one class we have two, two more kids than we had last year or something, but.
That was, that was my guess.
Yeah, I think it was the overstatement at the beginning. There was, uh, we had to hire, we had to hire more, we had to buy more. So we started low but corrected it and we just confirmed it after that.
Yeah.
In the case of the math textbooks, if my memory is correct, it was a new initiative, a new math initiative that we were putting in place that required textbooks that we didn't need before.
And I think they were a little behind in publishing. And I know there was some work to just get ahead, to get the year started, and they came later. So that was more of a, kind of a backlog.
Yeah, I remember Nicole Heimark, our previous assistant, our previous director of curriculum, talking about that, about the wagon publication. Okay, so Lisa, I know you wanted to talk also.
Yes, actually, and I was getting educated, so, I'm sorry. No, okay. I hope you think you're doing. Hi, so I'm Lisa Eastland. The first thing I want to talk to you about, I'm going to talk to you as the president of the Parent Teacher Student Association from Sahhegan. Give you a quick update. We have re-energized the group this year. In December, we had Chris Ezekiel, who's a parent but also a professional psychologist and works at St. Enselm's, did a wonderful presentation on the teenage brain and what colleges are seeing behaviorally and mentally of students incoming to, to the college level, but kind of how do teens operate? And it was fascinating. And we had over 25 people here, so we were absolutely thrilled. Secondly, we have a scholarship fundraising event this Saturday at the AMHRS Country Club. It's 80's Night Dance. It's going to be fantastic. Maggie Boye has created some wonderful raffle baskets. One of them is a golf basket and it includes a free round at the AMHRS Country Club. The Dovetail Dental has donated enough products that it's worth $700. And one of them, which is really significant to parents of teens, it's a night away. It's a $50 gift certificate to Pigtail Restaurant, bottle of champagne, truffles, and a night at the Crown Plaza. So if you would like to attend, we more than welcome you. And it goes towards our scholarships that we hand out every year to community-based, we award them on, on community service-based application. The second thing is, Joanne McDeed is an advisor to community council. And she and Paul Schlotman are heading up an initiative along with the PTSA and the AMHRS PTA to do a film screening of a documentary that has won awards at Sundance called Most Likely to Succeed. And it is a significant conversation starter in America about where education is, has it come from and where is it going? And what do we need to do to create learners and workers for this new technology-based, innovatively-based work environment that is so different from when we all were in high school and graduating and heading into the world of work? We are offering this film screening on March 24th at 6:30 in the auditorium here. It is free to all attendees. Community council, I think, is going to have maybe some food for dinner because it's around, you know, pizza or something for sale, a bake sale for their own scholarship fundraising, something like that. But we feel so strongly about the discussions that this movie will initiate. And it begins answering the question, do we want to be leaders or followers in where education is going? What's fascinating to me is when you look at the trailers and you read the book, a lot of what they say is what Sahhegan is already doing. Project-based assessment, be whole learner, focusing on creativity, innovation, public speaking, all of those things that we do. But I don't think the conversation stops there. And I hope that everyone here and the community makes a huge effort to attend this event. I would love to see as many people who were at the deliberative come to see this movie because those are the conversations we really, really need to be having. So that is me with a PTSA hat on. Now I'm putting my parent hat on. And I have to tell you, Rob, that the other two students, one was Alex Cullen and the other one was Sarah Eastland. So they were ones in the trouble valley. One of those is extremely near and dear to my heart. I love Alex, but you know, okay. So the other part, to continue on with Maggie's discussion about the books, because that was also in my, on my questions. My daughter takes the AP US History class, the APUSH class. There are enough, and just talking, there are enough books for two of the three sections with a.
Actually, I read 20 more.
Okay.
There's actually 15 copies of the American project. And 47 were tucked out, they're still available.
Okay.
So we didn't store them.
Excellent. I was going to say, there's about a handful of kids who still don't have an actual textbook. And while it's available online, when you're trying to research for the current mock trial about colonialism in the Philippines, it's very difficult online to flip back and forth through all the different areas supposed to research. So yes, it's available, but I don't think any of us would want to have to write a paper or prepare a trial just searching through things online. AP Statistics, whether there's a book available to purchase or not, the kids don't have one and they're getting photocopies from the teacher. If there's not one available to purchase and that is the curriculum that's provided, great. My concern is if she's just photocopying from a book as a board, you should be concerned about the legal aspects of that because it's a copyrighted book. And our students should have books. The last bit is the books that are provided to the math class are paperbacks. What I don't know is whether that's all that the publisher provides, creates, or did we try to go a cheaper route and buy paperback because the hardback was very expensive? But we have kids carrying around their math books in plastic bags so they don't get messed up in their backpacks because they have to turn them back in. So as a board, we should be looking, you all should be looking at the process of that, maybe a little bit of, are we being a penny wise to be a pound foolish? Or is that just how it is and that's the environment that we all live in? Because everybody's trying to save a penny, publishers included.
Um, well, it's not the board's job to buy textbooks, so.
Correct.
But it is, I understand. Somebody who might know.
Christine could probably explain that because she did when we had the curriculum committee review.
Yes, because this was brought up at the finance committee, advisory finance committee as well, about the textbooks availability and things like that.
Okay, I didn't hear that from the, from the Sahhegan Advisory Finance Committee? Okay.
The subcommittee, yeah.
Our math textbooks, we had the option of purchasing paperback or hardcover books. The challenge with a hardcover book is that it's both volumes all together. So it's about as thick as like a dictionary. So we looked at both options. The softcover books were a little less expensive, but not significantly. So our decision was based on what we thought was more user-friendly for students, not based on the, the price of them. Also, with the purchase of either the softbound book or the hardcover book, we got eight years of an ebook license, so all students have electronic access to their math textbooks as well as homework help online. So we felt that most likely students would be carrying it, you know, just during the school day, not necessarily bringing it home. Teachers have come up with different methods, either plastic bags or things like that to try to preserve the books. One thing, if you purchase a binder, the softcover book actually has holes punched in it so that the book can fit inside a binder. So that was the other suggestion given to students, to try to prolong the life of the books. The other good thing about the softcover book, if you lose one volume, you can purchase just one volume.
That's nice.
So it's less, you know, if we lost a hardcover book, it's twice the price to replace than one of the paperback volumes, which is why we made that decision.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I think our reliance on online textbooks is misplaced.
Well, and it's funny because we hear that technology is the way to go and that's all the kids do nowadays. And then, you know, there are some people that still want, you know, periodicals in the library and.
I think a lot of kids still, when they're going to do their, I, I don't know, that would, might be an interesting poll to take. But I, the reason why I bring it to the board and not, because it's not your job to worry about what books are being purchased, but just to make sure that there's a process in place that is evaluating book usage, book purchase, all of those sorts of things.
I think in this case, maybe all we need to do is remind the teachers, remind the students to put the book in a binder.
Sure. Well, and to make sure that.
The fact that there's three hole punches.
Right, absolutely.
And, and so, so the one thing I thought of, Lisa, too, while you were talking is, I'm really glad the PTSA is active again. So I wonder if you might be willing to come on a quarterly basis and give us an update?
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, we have a meeting on March 4th. So if you want to email me and remind me, I will remind everyone about the March 24th event.
What time was that?
It's at 6:30. And I think your next meeting is on March 3rd.
3rd, okay. Well, you know, it's been a long wait.
It's whatever.
But, yeah, everyone will know what their meeting is if they want to be here. And I'll be here.
And then, yes, I'm absolutely, absolutely happy to do that.
And your three minutes is up.
That's all. Thank you.
Christine, are, do we have maybe one case? Any ebooks that we have, I feel, are in support of? Maybe one case where we're using it as the primary or?
Um, I don't, I don't know of any case we're using it as the primary. We've purposely purchased both because we feel, you know, we're not one-to-one yet. Unless you have a one-to-one laptop environment, you really can't truly go solely with ebooks. So we did make that decision. It's not much more expensive to buy both the published book and the ebook because the ebook comes free. The cost of the publishing is not even that expensive. It's all of the work that went into develop the textbooks, that's what you're paying for. So when you buy electronic access, it's still almost as expensive as buying the book and the electronic access. So we felt pretty strongly about doing both and having both and then reevaluating that later on when we go for, you know, future textbook adoptions in subsequent years.
So the electronic is in addition to anything?
Right.
In some cases, maybe the four or five was just based on enrollment projections that had to hit actuals?
I know we had an issue in, in math in the very beginning of this year. Our enrollment projections for a specific course, it was a little off and we were 10 short. As soon as we found out about it, we immediately corrected it and purchased those textbooks. I don't know, and I was chatting with Kathy, I'm not sure what happened with the AP History. If we don't realize that there's a problem, if it's not brought to our attention, we can't fix it. So it's just been brought to our attention, so we're able to fix it.
Well, it sounds like there's three still available. So if there are students that don't, that don't have one and want it, there's still, there's three still available. But if all students wanted one, we'd be four short. So I, I have a feeling, like I said earlier, that it might be the enrollment is different every year for AP US History, for instance, and so you don't always know. But yeah, that's a, it's good then that, you know, we're made aware of it, so. So thank you, Lisa. And you know, I was joking, well, I wasn't joking about the three minutes, but I was joking. But yeah, so thank you very much, Christine, for explaining that.
And 20 seconds worth of thanks to Lisa, the PTSA. It was a Jerry Maguire moment. It was on the ropes and then I received a long email from Lisa, so I want to thank her on behalf of the school. And if you notice what she came up here talking about, there was no talk about, you know, snacks or supporting that way. It was about really substantial, significant situations, everything from scholarships to helping start a public dialogue around education. So we're really excited, PTSA got off the ropes and really excited at their reimagining of it. So it's been a great addition.
Yes, I concur. Okay, so that brings us to the consent agenda. And does anyone want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I'm going to pull all the minutes.
All the minutes, okay?
All the minutes.
She covered it.
Okay, minutes also, okay. Do you want to go ahead and give Dana the corrections then?
Um, I'll try. I'm sure there are others who have corrections.
Yeah, Tim does also.
On the January 4, 2016, Christine Jansen has voted twice.
You got two votes wrong.
It's on the only page that there is, January 4th, there's only one page.
Line number?
It's a numbers, I don't have, there's no line on mine. It's number three in the discussion. It's the third line in paragraph, in number three, it says.
Not to fund honorariums?
Yes.
No, Dave Chen's minutes.
Oh, no, you did not take them. Dave Chen took them, yes, that's right. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, so I don't know how that gets corrected then, since.
Um, I think that Dana can still correct them for us if we submit them.
Yeah.
Or Marion, or Marion, yeah.
Okay.
Right here, says Christine, and it says Christine, Mary Lou, and Christine voted yes. So she's listed twice.
The other, the other part of this is it, it's not clear to me what the motion was that we were voting on. It says the board voted not to fund honorariums for Sahhegan alumni to participate in focus groups. So was the motion not to fund? Or, I don't know what the motion was.
Um, well, the motion was, remember, not to give gifts to students for coming to talk to us about the advanced committee because Dave wanted to pay them.
I know that's what it was, but it's not clear here what the motion was that we were voting on. It just says the board voted not to.
I was saying, I wasn't there and I read it, I mentioned it.
The motion is where?
Uh, well, it just says the motion was made by Christine Jansen.
The motion not to fund honorariums was made. So I think it just, if you, if, just instead of saying the board voted, could be said that Christine made, was it Chris made the motion?
Not to fund.
I think it, we're just rewording a little bit.
Yes.
I'll have to get them.
Yeah, Marion, Marion has those.
Thank you, Danae. And what else do you have?
Um, hold on, I've got to find the other ones. There, there were some things that were omitted. Let's see.
Tim, do you have yours in the meantime while she's looking?
Yep.
There's the next one, which is, no, one after, January 13 for the public hearing.
Yep.
I'm not listed as being in attendance, but I know for a fact that I was there because I'm also quoted, labeled it down.
Did we call you?
No, that, Dave took those too, I think. Oh, you took those?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
So, yeah, I was there.
Oh, he took the ones after the public hearing, okay. Was that all, Tim?
It's all I had, yeah.
You didn't want to be invisible?
Exactly.
All right, Jeannie, have you found yours?
Um, yes, it's in, it's 494, 495. It just sort of, it just, oh, I'm sorry, in these, this say.
January 6.
Yes, January 6. Line 494 and 495. You know, it's, it just sort of ends and then we go into policies and, and there's no sort of, it says that, I noted that we need to be prepared for anything and the administration can only do so much. The, the actual ending was that Rob said there was going to be a discussion internally about this issue and that he wanted us to have time, or to, to give them time.
Security issue.
So, yeah, the security issue. So it, it just, it ends abruptly without any sort of concluding statement.
So that broad, broadly, the discussion is.
Internally, right.
There's a, there's a.
Incident command.
Yeah, it's the command, yeah.
So Rob, would you discuss the.
Yeah, I mean, or just incident command is district-wide, really. So the incident command.
Discussions are going on now, district-wide. And you did say when you thought that those discussions would be complete, didn't you? Or you don't know? I was going to say, if you did, we should probably put that in there.
I think we just give regular updates. It's a, it's a huge undertaking, so it'll be over the course of the next couple of years, but.
I think it's ongoing.
Yeah.
Okay.
But this stuff doesn't really come back.
I agree.
All right, so maybe we'll get quarterly updates on that.
Right, and, and so, you're particular, this is a different subject, but are you content with the fact that it may be years before this issue is resolved?
No, I think more like what Betty said, it's, it's really, we have some timelines of what we want to get capacity in, and then it's just the consistent review, are we current with all the different aspects of it? So this is ongoing in that we would have consistent updates to show you how current we're staying, but we do have some work, you know, Peter might be able to summarize it, some work that we want to definitely have completed around some of our training that we'd want for staff, and we're definitely ready for evacuation, we're definitely ready for secondary evacuation, we're definitely connecting with the bus companies and, you know, second site areas. So we are building the, when do we want those things completed, and then after that, it's just maintenance to make sure we're current. So I would say through the summer, probably.
Yeah.
So it's only, it's almost churning informational, but I think I talked to you about, can I talk more at the SAU board meetings? This is a, a whole SAU initiative, and what Rob says, after last, really began with our bomb threat of middle school last March. So what we've been trying to do is audit all of our procedures and protocols. For example, if I had to give, let people know that we had to move all of our kids, all 2,300 kids, from our schools to somewhere. So we had, we're, we're looking into that right now, we're gonna use Hampton Hills, or, you know, we, we, we're, we're selecting protocols in case something happens.
Right.
And we haven't, we really didn't review that a lot. Now we meet monthly.
Good.
So I'm gonna do some reports at the SAU board meeting, and individual reports at the board meetings of each district, and we're supposed to do that. So lots of things we're doing, people are being certified, so I feel like we have a better handle on that.
Okay. I just feel like we, we are unique compared to the other districts in terms of what security to the building we have versus the others. So it, that's, that's a sort of a separate issue, rather than being prepared for, you know, a disaster sort of thing, so.
Yeah, we've also talked about that.
Okay.
About what you're talking about, absolutely. And each school actually, even though they're prepared differently, they're all, in a way, prepared differently, so we have to react to that.
So I put down quarterly reports from Rob on that, so I know you won't be here.
You put that down, yeah.
I did for agenda items.
Okay.
But I can invite you, and I know those are gonna happen.
Okay.
Or Howard can.
Or you can sit in your popcorn and watch us.
Okay.
Yeah.
I could, in my jammies.
All right, did you have other changes still?
Um, I don't know that I've had any to this one.
Okay.
Um, no, I just wanted to make sure, at the end of line 495, is it okay if I let Rob Sully discuss that there are current discussions about Incident Command? Is that what you said? Ongoing, ongoing discussions with incident.
Yeah, and if you put SAU 39 Incident Command, that's all of our leaders that get together monthly.
Are you all set then, or no?
Yep.
Do you have minutes from, or changes for other minutes?
Are you talking to me?
Yes.
Yes, I do, but I have to find them, sorry. It's very hard, it's like, I wish I could write on my iPad so I could make notes.
You can, actually.
How is number 10?
No, I'm not gonna tell you how.
That's not going to.
No.
Okay.
Post meeting, you can have your.
There was one other that was an omission, where something was just not, not added.
And we're still talking about this next?
Oh, this is the next set of, next set.
January 13, the public hearing? Or, the public hearing or after the public hearing?
Yeah, and I, I guess the, was it after the public hearing that this, that those minutes reflect?
Yes, the votes? Yes, that was after the public hearing. David took those.
No, David didn't take these.
Well.
The ones for the meeting.
Yeah, Danae wasn't there, yeah.
But Danae took the public hearing.
Right.
Right, but after the public hearing.
Oh, after the public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay, so is this, is this reflective of exactly what happened, I guess is my question? Because we did, I believe, ask David why he chose not to support the budget at that meeting, correct? And is that in here at all, what his answer was?
No.
Should it be? I mean, it was part of, part of the, part of the meeting. I think it should be, but I, you know.
Can we make that change with him not here?
He's not here, so.
I mean, we all were witness, I guess, but.
Right, but if.
I'm not sure.
If, if this is a public record, it seems like it should be something we, that everybody should be aware of. I mean, these are, these are our minutes.
Do you want to wait and?
I think that's the only way, is to wait, wait till he comes here to approve those minutes.
Okay, we could do that.
Okay, well, so do you want to put voting on those minutes off until next month, then?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll table those, and if anybody wants to make a motion on the rest of the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second, Howard? All right, any more discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay. All right, presentations, it's not listed here, but I imagine Jim, it goes along with the action item of turf field. Do you want to do your turf, the turf field presentation?
Sure. I'll have the ordinance first. I don't have an article.
Well, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Is it on here, T.J.?
Oh, it's, it's now.
We're, over that.
So I was asked to come in and comment on the interviews that we held, on the two selected vendors for the proposed turf installation. The interviews were held on January 14th in the morning. The two chosen vendors out of the five that, that provided proposals were Quirk Construction and, in combination with Shaw Sports Turf, and the second one was Progress. The review of those basically gave us indication of there was a clear choice, I think, among the two. All of the participants in the interviews pretty clearly came to the same conclusion. So it came down to a recommendation for Quirk Construction, Shaw Sports as the, pretty much the unanimous and recommended choice. And what we found in the interviews, I highlighted some issues here that were outstanding to me, and were also spoken by several of the participants, is what they recognized. So I'll just run through those quickly. Quirk is a certified field builder and recognized by the American Sports Builder Association. Quirk demonstrated an understanding, the understanding of the design build concept of the project. That's where we don't have formal architectural drawings and so forth. We rely on the licensed contractor to come in and define and construct to his design that we approve. Third item was that Shaw has been a carpet manufacturer for 45 years, 25 of the last years being also in the sports turf market. Every stitch of carpet in this building is Shaw, every bit of it. Shaw turf manufacturing stitching methods were obviously superior. This is, this is a chart up here that shows what their recommendation is. They're recommending what they call a legion material. It's a double stitch material. In other words, if you can envision a needle and thread going through something, you get a single loop, as you'll see on that side. They came up with a legion, legion version that actually does double stitching. It, it has a split film, monofilament fiber, and another monofilament fiber done at the same time. And what that does is give you a pretty dense weave, as compared to this over here, I don't know how well you can see it, but that's referred to as cornrow stitching. Everything is lined up, and as the, as the field degrades and deteriorates over years, that's what you start seeing. Whereas here, you have more of a blended surface, and the interaction of two different fibers nicely supports the looks of the field, as well as the playability and the light. So that was a, very much a definite positive, just because of their, their experience in, in the stitching methods.
Is that a sample of it, in pass room?
Yep.
I think if you look at that closely enough, you'll see that there's actually different, different types of fiber in there. It's somewhat hard to see.
The pictures show it very well.
The thing that was pointed out by most of the people in attendance in the, in the interviews was the interaction of all the Shaw folks and the Quirk. Quirk is the general contractor doing most of the base construction, the drainage and so forth. Obviously Shaw is the installer of the turf on top of that. But this was a marriage team, this was a good partnership, it was very evident that they have been working together for a long time. All three of them that attended carried, carried the show and provided all the information that was necessary. I think it was, it was easy to understand, and it was pretty obvious that they understood Quirk also recognized that this being a design build contract, that there were certain services that they would provide to us that we don't even know we need. That sounds strange, but they, they included funds in their contract to cover issues for pre-construction surveys, services such as surveys, geotechnical work, program design, and review time with the schools. In other words, they would work with us, the school administration, to come up with the best field for our, our needs. The other major item was that Quirk owns their own equipment and has their own employees. They have a year-round construction operation, they have all the equipment and the people on staff to do the job as part of their routine. Shaw, the installer of the turf, utilizes about a dozen different crews around the United States to do the installing, but they are also Shaw employees, they work for the company. Quirk also suggested and recommended and included in their proposal, the shock pad. This has been discussed very greatly, the benefits of it, the Gmax issues, the compression issues, and how they're greatly becoming more of an issue year to year. So they feel that it gives us the flexibility to control the Gmax levels and bring a field into place that probably is as good a technology as anything in the, in the New Hampshire area right now.
Is that the same thing?
This is another shock material that's offered. I personally don't like that, because that's recycled tennis shoes, basically. Recycled sneakers, Nike materials and so forth. That is expanded polystyrene, similar to any other polystyrene that you might find in packing materials or whatever.
This one's also more expensive, right? My recollection, this one is more expensive.
The sun?
Yeah.
I don't, I'm not, I don't recall that.
I think it was.
Is it?
Yeah.
This is more expensive?
Yes. But it's more, it has, I don't know, perforations in it, so you can see that the.
But that comes, that's included in the price they gave us, and it also comes with a 25-year warranty, meaning that when it comes to replacing the turf, when that time comes, you do not have to worry about the shock pad, it outlasts the turf itself, so.
Oh, that's good to know.
And the other big positive is that Shaw, as a turf manufacturer, has the material testing and design specialists and facilities. They can actually test, advise, and adjust the infill mix in combination with the shock pad to get us to exactly where we want to be as far as a Gmax level. So that's a very, very good addition for us to have that under control, I think, at least to have it. So the Progress concerns that came out, I didn't really consider that that was a formal presentation of materials, or simply just, there was more of a simple discussion of, here's who we are, and this is what we do. There was nothing that they posted, they didn't bring any materials in, there was one small folder handout that said, this is, this is who we are and what we do.
That's surprising, for such a big, that's surprising for such a big contract, you know, you'd think you'd put a little more effort in.
Yep. They didn't identify or highlight their material supplier capabilities. They never really told us who made their materials. I found out later, it's a company called AC Global, or AT Global. It's a, it's a recognized material according to FIA, FAA, but it's not specially certified or anything else, but it's worldwide, it's a worldwide application, it's used everywhere. But they didn't even bother to bring that into the discussion, that they were bringing this, the quality or level of the material they were gonna supply. When we started discussing subcontractors with them, they basically answered that simply by saying that they will supply certified installers. We don't know if these people work for them, we, we have no information really that, that says that they have control or have people specifically to respond and install to their requirements. So they kind of sidestepped that. They did not include the shock pad and recommend that, that it was, it would be a negative effect on player performance. And as it turns out, that's probably, that could be the case, because with the shock pad and a, and not achieving a proper balance with the infill, you can get a soft field. So that's where the Quirk, Shaw mix them is into play, because they can adjust the infill to the shock pad to achieve whatever target we want as far as the Gmax number. And ending out the meeting, they were offering upgrades and extended warranties and whatever we wanted to get the business. They simply said that, you give us the job, we'll, we'll knock the price down, and we'll increase the warranty by two years, and it didn't sit well with me, I don't know how Pim felt about that.
I agree.
I also had, there was a lot of reference information that came in after we had these meetings. We had, I had several phone calls from members of the Synthetic Turf Council. You may remember the one individual at the public hearing who spoke in support of Synthetic Turf and so forth. He was actually representative from Sprint Turf, but he's also on the, on the council. I had a call from a couple of the vendors who did not provide an attractive proposal, in other words, they never got to interview, and they basically said, I don't care if we get it or not. The Progress people are basically a management firm, they will use subcontracting, they will not be there to support you when the problems arise. Your best choice is to go with the proven entity, which was Quirk, which was Quirk and Shaw Sport Turf. So, and those are unsolicited information at all. So based on that, I think the general consensus was that going with Quirk Construction and Shaw Sport Turf was the best choice. They were not the low bidder, Progress was the low bidder, but Quirk was second, the lowest bidder. So that's where we still stand as far as that recommendation goes.
I'd also like to add, I think, as you see, the price difference. I'd also like to add, I think, as you see the price differences between the two bids, it's important to note that Progress did not have any kind of a pad, as Jim mentioned. When we priced that out, we did ask them if they could, "Oh yeah, we can put that in. It's about $80,000 to $90,000, something." So when you add that in, now you really are back to comparable pricing and you put them on even playing field, so to speak. Fun intended, that the, you know, it was significant difference between Quirk, the professionalism of Quirk-Shaw versus Progress. I mean, significant difference. So.
Jeannie, I don't know, you left a little bit early, so I don't know how much Progress saw.
I had that exact impression. I mean, the Quirk people were outshone the other vendor.
Progress, yeah.
By miles in terms of their, just the presentation, the level of detail, the professionalism, everything. I did have a question though.
These are, matter of fact, these are their charts, right?
Right, these are their charts. This is what they're suggesting. Obviously the logo is at our discretion, what we want to do.
We don't know if we want to go with Rob or Scully.
Yeah.
Rob's profile?
That could also stand for...
Old man in the mouth.
Yeah, that definitely...
That could stand for Steve.
Yeah, right.
But what we have here, what the proposal is, is to insow the football and soccer lines and then put in small tick mark locations for our painters to do field hockey and so forth, since those are somewhat seasonal. We can paint them and repaint them as necessary. My concern with the logo is if you get too fancy and too big and too intricate, the failure in these fields a lot of times is related to seams. And the more you stitch and seam to put in a fancy logo, the more you're susceptible to problems. So I think the simplicity of this is maybe SHS instead of just S. I don't know, but anyway.
Could I just ask, could you talk a little bit about the infill product that they're planning to use?
They're planning to use, as the board directed me last fall, we were to go with the standard infill product, which is roughly 50% sand and 50% chrome rubber. That's, and roughly, as I stated earlier, they will change that balance as necessary to get to the Gmax number that we're throwing around is somewhere between 100 and 130.
Do you have an idea of what the timeline to complete a project like this would be?
Starting in June and done before June of August.
For, yeah, I think their typical installation time is about 60 days. So, and they can, they were very confident that they'd make it available for whatever first sports we have in the fall that use the field, would use it.
And where do we stand with the fundraising compared to what this costs?
Ah, doesn't matter. The other slides come in.
Oh, do they have those to show or are you just going to speak to them?
I don't know. I can, well, I can speak to them. Do we have them on?
I see we've got them.
Oh, well, the ones that David had sent you earlier, or last week, whenever it was. Whenever he said...
The deliberative, remember he was going to do in the downtime?
Yeah. I guess we have one for the deliberative. I didn't know I needed to.
That's okay. I just, I said something to Mary. I just, I just speak to her.
You sent something to me?
No, I sent you, yeah, I did. I sent you a note and I were saying that I wanted to talk...
Oh, that you wanted to talk about it. Okay, I didn't know, I didn't have any slides to pass on though.
Well, everybody had the slide. He sent them to everybody.
Well, for the public, I mean, for the deliberative, yeah.
I'm sorry, we didn't realize that this was a meeting tonight as well.
Oh, okay. Should have been more explicit. I apologize.
Apology accepted.
Yeah, okay. Anyway. So, just to recap, right, the anonymous donor came forward with $500,000 gift towards artificial turf for this stadium field. We committed to do it with no taxpayer funding and we had a public forum back in August of last year and began our fundraising efforts. As Jim mentioned, we received five bids from the low of, you know, Progress of $765,000 plus up to almost $1.2 million. We eliminated the three highest, not because they're the highest, but I think because, as Jim said in the previous presentation, they lacked the detail that we were looking for. So we went with those two that Jim talked about and the committee there has recommended Quirk-Shaw, as Jim mentioned. So now that we know what our target is, you know, because that was kind of part of the fundraising issue. We had gotten up to roughly 782, something like, or 72, something like that, somewhere in that vicinity. So we're close, but we weren't there. We would have met the low bid, but we're not going with them. So now we see that we're 110-ish, $1,000 apart from the goal. So we just wanted to get that back out in front of the public and get back to, you know, we want to reestablish our fundraising drive, get people to understand their urgency and, you know, that we were close, we're really close and we think we are very confident we can get there. Obviously the more people that can get involved, the better. So go to amherstfoundation.org, go buy a brick or three or four.
It's also on the Sohegan, a link on the Sohegan website, right?
Yeah, it was. I don't know if it still is. I haven't seen it, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, I'll double check in case they were given a time, they may have been given a timeline, keep it up until...
Yeah.
So. I will keep up until all the money is raised.
Until all the money is...
And then keep up more. But anyway, so if anybody has any questions, they can contact Dave Chandler, myself at our surprise emails. He mentions Eric Facy as well, but he doesn't mention any contact information. So for those people who know Eric Facy, they can certainly get in touch with him as well. And that's pretty much it. So, you know, we want public support and everybody goes out there and buys a brick and we go back and get some other, few more large donors will be there, so.
Chris, did you... Yeah, so what's the timeline now? I mean, the timeline is supposed to be December 31st.
Yep, so our...
Donor?
Donor, thank you. Bringing on your, I guess. So our donor is committed. We met with him on Friday, last Friday morning. He's committed to move forward, no problem. One of the questions I asked Jim, and so now that we have, I guess, do we have to make a motion, by the way, at the board level to accept Quirk-Shaw?
So we, yeah, what I had, this was the recommendation from the committee to recommend Quirk and Shaw to the board to build the turf field maximum price of 882 contingent upon 100% private funding for the field. So you'd want to make this motion to award that, award this to Quirk and Son contingent on the private funding for the field being raised 100%.
Yeah, so I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, we can still have discussion after if anybody wants to. So does somebody want a second? Steve seconds? Okay, further discussion or questions?
Quickly looking on the SAU 39, it's not listed for the donation party. You can get that back up.
The link to the bricks?
Rob, can I have that?
On this SAU 39?
Oh, okay.
Is it on Sohegan?
I think it's on Sohegan's.
Yeah, I'm double checking right now.
Jeannie?
I just wondered, Pim, if you guys have a more sort of aggressive marketing plan in place to sort of get this, you know, get to the finish line? Because I don't think a lot of people are, you know, hopefully, hopefully there are millions watching us tonight, but it's very doubtful. So I'm just wondering if you could get information out in other places, if you have a plan for that?
Yeah, we have talked about that. Our fundraising chairs, which are Travis Warren and Brian Hall, they're essentially driving the effort, but we talked about getting a thermometer to put out in front of the school, you know, fundraising thermometers.
I think we've got that on the website now.
Oh, is it? Okay, great. I also know where that. Talked about getting more articles in the paper or letters to the editor type of stuff and making a, like I said, a final push towards large donors and trying to get everybody, get the whole communities of Amherst, Mount Vernon, anybody else who wants to for that matter, to get in and buys bricks and, you know, doesn't have to be...
It's got to be a little more than a brick though for some people.
Yeah, true, yeah.
Right.
That's what I mean. We go after some large donors and fill in with bricks afterwards. But one thing that we tried to emphasize, that it's a community-based thing, it's not just a sports thing, because, you know, having, we are of very strong opinion that having an artificial turf will attract families to come to this area and, you know, wants to be here, move into Amherst, Mount Vernon communities. So, you know, it can be, bricks can be for anything, you know, the arts, theater, anybody, anything. So please, please buy a brick.
Rob, can we send it out in another apparent email too? I know we have in the past, but can we send it out again in apparent email?
They have the thermometer, nope.
All right, any other discussion or questions before we vote on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, unanimous? Okay, great, and thank you to the committee.
Now that we voted to move forward with this, the next thing I was going to say is, because Jeannie brought it up, is where do we stand with the funds and how do we disperse that, I think, is maybe where you were going. So Jim's going to work now with Quirk-Shaw and establish a, you know, some kind of milestone invoicing type of payment schedule. And so we'll know where, when do we need what funds. So we may only need $100,000, let's just say, to start. We have that. That's not a problem. So that'll allow us the extra time to get to, you know, where we need to. And obviously there's always some percentage, 10%, whatever it is, held until the final stitch is laid, you know? So, so I think we're in good shape.
Oh, Steve?
Just about the motion we just passed, it's like you can't start till it's all committed. So we can't start early hoping that we'll get the rest of our plans out and finish.
Yeah, that's true. So I think you're right. And maybe Jim can get the details. I think the initial, they said they would hold a spot for us in their schedule essentially. And I guess, and then we have to find out at what point we have to commit.
Right. We actually need the schedule of when we actually need to say, "Okay, it's a go." So we can work with Quirk and Shaw on that schedule and we'll inform the fundraising committee of that timeline. And that would be it. Then we would have to know, can we move forward or not at that point?
Yeah, yeah, good point. Thanks.
Well, thank you to the committee and especially the fundraiser chairs and Travis Warren and Brian Hall, it was, yeah. So thank you again to them. And Jim, I know that the board, our board and the whole SAU board will have a chance to see you before this, but this will be your last, our last meeting that you'll be at. So I just want to say thank you so much, you know, all of the work that you have done. You know, I think somebody said it at the SAU meeting, everything you touch seems to turn to gold and you've just done a phenomenal job here for SAU 39 and for Sohegan. So since this is your last Sohegan meeting you'll be at, thank you very much for all your dedication and hard work.
And I certainly appreciate that, but the thing that I have to remark on is that I've had not just this district, but all different, the support of the board as far as funding and decision-making and so forth. We couldn't have accomplished the things we accomplished in the last 10 years without that support. So you deserve some of this also, obviously.
Well, thanks.
I have to have the money to do the job.
Well, thank you for doing it so well. Yes.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, so Steve, the parking ordinance for Election Day, do you want to make a motion on that? It was in the packet, so everybody read it and I don't know if you want to...
So I'll move and I'll speak to that. So I moved about the parking ordinance, which essentially, it's, you can read the words, but the intention is, on the two next to Election Days, the presidential primary and then town elections on March 8th, I have my moderator hat on now. As moderator, I need a tool to help keep that parking lot clear so that as new voters come in, they have easy parking. And so a lot of those mechanisms is to have an official motion, official position by both the selectmen and the school district that parking is restricted for 45 minutes so that I can, I have a stick to use to move people out of there to make room for new voters. So we've done this before, I think we did it three, four years ago.
How do you know if someone's been there for 45 minutes?
That's what I want to know. How do you enforce this?
I am dependent on tactless.
Okay.
But sometimes it is, sometimes it's the people holding signs.
That's what I thought.
Who have parked and they tend to be the most egregious. They take the closest spaces to the building and they park there for six hours and those are pretty easy to spot. So this is we have something to move along with.
So have you given information to those people and to the volunteers, like me who will be there all day, as to where you would prefer that they park?
Well, I don't know who's going to be there until they get there. So I tell them, I tell them why as it starts forming out there, the inside people. Plus I do post signs, once this is approved, I have some small signs I post in the lot that say 45 minutes, so.
But the election officials?
Election officials.
I usually park by the gym.
Yeah, in the past, we've asked them to park over on the other side of the building where all the decrepit trailers are.
Right, that's right. Plug for our storage.
Plug for our storage.
Yes.
If I had a pun like pins, I would have used it. But we forgot to tell people that. So we'll go get that message out to the poll leaders before Tuesday.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for organizing that so well. So we also have the second reading of, well, actually for the GCC-GDC, it's not a second reading though, is it? So do you want to talk about that one first, Steve?
Sure. So it's, I get, this, we're talking about the last four pages of the packet, which is the same thing as two different forms, final form and then changes. So I'll give you the background. We have a sick bank policy which enables staff members to donate sick days to a sick bank and if they have a catastrophic illness where they exhaust all of their own personal sick days, they can apply to a committee of their peers who manage the sick bank and get additional sick days until they overcome their illness or become eligible for long-term disability. So the sick bank, it's complicated, but essentially when you're hired, you are asked to donate the first sick day you earn to the bank. And that's, and that's all you have to do to give to the bank. When the bank has sustained, it has lots of days and it's not a problem there. The issue is that when you're hired, I don't know exactly, but I'm sure you get like an inch of forms to sign and that's one of them that Carrie or someone has to explain to you and it gets lost in the shuffle and staff members don't do it. Eventually they ought to come around, but sometimes it takes a while for them to realize they should have done it and then they get into it and once a year when you can join up again. We happen to be at an auspicious moment. Every staff member is a member of the sick bank right now. So Carrie proposed to PPC, because everyone does eventually, let's not make it optional. Let's make it mandatory. When you are hired on, you become a member of the sick bank, your first sick day you ever earned goes in there and then you don't have to worry about forever after. It's like buying insurance, protected from then on. And PPC thought that was a good idea, so they recommended this change to the board because no one would be forced to change because they're all members already. So, and then we just catch the next new hire and we're good forever after. So it felt like a very clean thing to do. So the proposed changes to GCC/GDC... So the proposed changes to GCC slash GDC, remove the word voluntary, removes the idea that you can or can't be edited, and then says, instead of you may, you will. So that, that's essentially the changes here, they're the wording in the various sentences that remove all the concept of option and make it mandatory. So PPC asks that the board adopt this amendment to the policy.
So I know from our policy chair that we don't really have to have a second reading if everybody's comfortable with voting on it now, so I guess I would ask, is everybody comfortable with these changes, vote on it now?
Yeah, I have my problem. I have one question, though.
Sure.
Who is the administrator that we designate by the school board? That, that's somebody from PPC committee?
Sick bank.
The sick bank, the administrator by five member committee.
Yep.
I'm sure we designated somebody a thousand years ago.
Steve, Rob knows, I think.
And then the person continues.
I'm, uh, don't know, I'm on it, I think maybe automatically, and there are four others that might be volunteers, so there are five of us administrator.
Yeah, it says two members designated by faculty steering committee, two members representing support staff, and one administrator designated by the school board.
Yeah.
So that should be something that we should put on when we do our changes and after the new election.
Committee assignments?
Committee.
There's actually a whole bunch of policies buried around, and it always happens, the board will report this to the committee, the board will that, and somehow we stumble along with incumbents without ever getting that through.
Well, you probably appointed the position of principal to the, to that committee.
I think that's right.
So that's how that, so there's not really a change.
But that should be in the policy, that's what it should say. It should say that the principal should be the designee of the school board.
But that wouldn't be a bad change to this right now.
That's what it should, that's what we should do.
Put the principal rather than administrator.
Right.
Can we do that with PPC's permission now?
Or his designee.
I don't, I don't think PPC would care if we made that change.
They'd like to see over with.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They're probably backed up because they get the administrator no matter what, I don't think they care which one we send.
And I think they would assume it's probably Rob.
So then can we amend that?
And you could make Rob's like easy by saying principal or his designee, because some days he may not be able to attend and would like to send one of his.
Yeah, that's fine. We have that in a lot of our policies, so.
So because I have my parliamentary hat on from last night, so if we vote on this amendment and make a, a second amendment after that, we do the second thing.
All right, so we already have a motion and a second, so everybody, all in favor? Unanimous, okay?
And so I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to amend the policy so that the board's designee is the principal or his designee.
Okay.
Even more good, his slash her designee.
Good job.
True, yes.
Good job.
Okay, second, Pim seconds again. Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, great. PPC will be glad that's done. Yes?
Since I promised this would be done in December, I'm glad.
Yeah, all right, so we have three policies that are a second reading, and so we have discussed them, I believe, at least two of them were brought to the SAU board, too, so if there are no further questions or discussion, we can take a motion one at a time, or I suppose if there's no questions, we can even do all three at once. Seeing none, Pim?
I'll make the motion that we accept all three.
Okay, do you want to name them, just for?
Uh, sure. Policy AA, which is school district legal status. Policy AC, non-discrimination. And policy ACA, sexual harassment and sexual violence policy.
Okay, second, a second, Jeannie seconds. Any further discussion?
Seeing, oh, just want to make sure people understand that it's not that we don't already have these policies, that we are just revisiting them to make sure that they're updated and updated.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
I was going to talk to that after we get to the motions.
Do I, well, go ahead now, that's fine.
Well, one of the things that the policy committee, we talked about, was that what we're going to do from now on is we're going to get these in the packages for the SAU for all the members to look at and critique or, you know, write down their comments and stuff, and come prepared to talk about the policy at the meeting, so that when we bring it to our own boards, we're ready to do this.
Right.
We're ready to say, okay, we've already talked this depth, we can move on with it.
Yeah.
And that's what we want to do here, is this is the second reading, now we can go ahead and make it.
Vote on it.
New division.
Yeah, I like that, because it's too hard to wordsmith in the middle of a.
You could, you could do a policy tonight, and next week you could change it all. And so what we talked about was that, you know, even in our process, the snafu here is that the SAU board looks at it, boards may do a couple of readings, so, but in the meantime, one board may find it, say, oh, I don't like that statement. So that backs us up. So we have talked about the fact that we're going to give people the policies in the SAU packet, look at them, bring it, spend 15 minutes at a board, SAU board meeting, making sure people are okay, and so when it comes to the district boards, it's almost perfunctory then, because otherwise, we made a, we're meeting twice a month, and we said we'd go through as many policies as we could by section. It's February, and you can see we're still in the A section.
Do you start backwards?
Yeah, she doesn't have that. So we want to really get moving, and our goal over the next year and a half is to get through all the policies, make sure we're clean, but I think we realized that's just holding us up, because we have one word that we want to, whoa, we got to go back. What we're saying now is let's, let's start here, front load it, and then we'll look through the districts, and tissue should be a district quick, got it, because you're already signed, so, and remembering that you could change it, for those of you who have policies, you look at one, and you look at it the next year, oh, I don't like this, I don't like that, so that's going to happen, but we'll only look through, so we'll have to.
That sounds like a very good plan.
I like that.
I like that.
Yeah. All right, so we have a motion and a second, so all in favor and unanimous? So, believe it or not, that brings us to the end of our meeting, but I do want to just, for the agenda items for next time, what I wrote down is putting Lisa or his or her designee on for the PTSA update quarterly, a quarterly incident command update, and then this committee just reminded me, Rob, can we talk next time about establishing a constitution committee, so we need that for community council? And then the action items I have are, well, April 1st is the US Department of Ed visit, so, you know, that'd be good for us to be informed about more. March 24th, for the event that Lisa brought up, and the link to the bricks and parent emails. Oh, yes, and Jeannie, do you want to just mention that, just informationally?
I just don't know if, if.
That wasn't on the agenda, so.
Right, I don't know if, I didn't get any response today in my questioning about the Zika virus and, and the fact that the Boston schools have canceled field trips to Zika virus countries. I just didn't know.
Including Florida?
Pardon me?
Including Florida?
Yeah.
Florida might get on that list soon.
It is on the list.
It is on the list, yeah. But I'm just wondering if, you know, is that, is it an issue for us at all?
If you look on the CDC site, there's three levels of warning, and then it's level two, which is precaution, take proper precautions for that kind of thing. And that, the map looked a lot like all of Central America and most of South America, if not all, under that level.
And the Caribbean is included as, as well.
I didn't see anything in the world, like in the United States at all, but it doesn't mean it's not.
So I just didn't know if we had any places that we were heading that might fall into that category.
Costa Rica, yeah.
And the Explorica, who was running that trip, sent out a travel, a, a warning, actually, saying that they should take precautions while they're there, and what, what to do if any other women were pregnant, and I hope.
Hope they're not.
I hope they're not, because my daughter's on the trip.
I think I meant the chaperone.
I think it's a streaming live streaming, oh, there we go. I think they're dealing with it that way.
So they're just making sure that they've got plenty of deeps and all that sort of stuff.
They sent it out to all the parents, the trip organizers?
Yeah.
Okay, so Pete, you feel like we're covered there?
I do.
Okay.
Similar to monitoring those front levels, I think is our standard, and they're supposed to be by that, we're a little bit hard on practice.
And they list the precautions on the site, like long suit or slung pants, proper precaution, precautionary things that they have, they have a list of them, so.
Good.
No, Pete's probably similar to this.
Great. All right, so with that, we'll have a motion to close? Steve?
Very clear.
All right?
Spring one arm, right up.
And Pim, Pim seconded, all in favor? Great, we come.